I now call this meeting to order. In accordance with the open public meetings, that notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy with the municipal clerk on January 25th, 2000, telephoning the Home News Tribune on January 25th, 2008 a.m., faxing a copy to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Highland Park Herald on January 26th, 2009 a.m., and coasting a copy on the bulletin board of the main floor of Borough Hall, 222, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, on January 26th, 2009 a.m. JoJo and Katie, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
... please. Your friend, Councilman Chauvin, Councilman Fox, Councilman Zizinski, Councilman Rapp, Councilman Wolf. We are Borough Attorney Tim Munero, Borough Administrator Mandy.
Here.
We have one item on our agenda tonight, and that is the appointment of Borough Attorney. As many of you know, this has been very frustrating for me, frustrating for the council, and I think it's been very frustrating for the community as well. What you may not know is a little bit of the history, and I'd like to give you a very short synopsis of it now, before I make my nomination, my appointment. As you know, I won the Democratic primary June 8th of last year. Very quickly, I reached out to the council members then and asked to meet with them. I was told by the council members that I first needed to meet with the party chair, and I did that. When I met with Mr. Semenero, the first thing that he said to me was, "I stay party chair, I stay Borough Attorney, I stay prosecutor, or you come back with six zero votes." Well, I guess that's come true. I found that I would not be able to work with Mr. Semenero, and I discussed that explicitly with each one of the council members. I was told by each one of the council members that it didn't matter to them that I felt that I couldn't work with him. They felt very strongly that he was their candidate and that they would keep him here. During the course of the general election, I reached out to the council members and tried to work with them in the campaign. They were not willing to work with me. After winning the general election November 2nd, I sent a letter to each one of the council members and the mayor, asking to meet with them, asking to be invited to executive session meetings, as was the tradition. I didn't hear from them. I called, didn't hear from them, spoke with individuals. And when I spoke with individuals of this council, I said, "Look, it's very clear that we have a problem here. We need a new Borough Attorney. This community voted overwhelmingly for a new kind of government, and with that comes necessarily one of the most important positions, the Borough Attorney." I offered at that point compromise. I offered, "Look, I bring three candidates, you bring three candidates, we work together, we find someone we can all work with." I was refused at that point. I asked to meet with the council members, they refused to meet with me. I went out on my own and met with legislators, met with other mayors, friends, and people that we know about municipal attorneys. I interviewed municipal attorneys, and I found one that I believed understood what was happening in Highland Park, that there was a change here, and people were looking for a different kind of municipal government. They were looking for an open government. They were looking for something very different. The candidate that I found, I knew immediately when I met him. This is a man who has experience with a very similar situation. This is a man who went to Perth Amboy with Mayor Haas, also a renegade Democrat, as they call us, and was able to help him bring about a renaissance in that city. He was also able to help him find a way to retain his independence, but also to work with the party, and that's exactly what I wanted to be able to do. He's also a man with tremendous amount of experience and respect in the field, and a man that understands what's going on. He gets it. Dan McCarthy gets what's going on in Highland Park. I'm afraid that the council doesn't. I'm here again once more to make this nomination. I wanted to make the nomination on the night of my inauguration, January 5th. The councilmen told me that, and told me that they needed more time. I came before you on January 11th. They asked me to wait, they needed more time. I believe it was the 17th was our last meeting, they refused to vote on him. I'm here to tell you tonight that my authority to appoint is about to run out. When my authority to appoint runs out, the authority falls to the council. The council had six votes. The mayor, in our form of government, has no vote. On the eve of my authority expiration, they're telling me that they'd like to compromise? I ask you, what's a compromise? With these six councilmen having a vote, the mayor has no vote, and I wonder when this idea to compromise came. I asked them to compromise months ago to spare this town what we've seen over the past few weeks. It's an embarrassment. There was no discussion of compromise then. Now, on this eve, there's talk of compromise. Well, let me tell you something. I've found a candidate who has offered us a fabulous financial package, $100,000 savings over my four-year term. I've found a candidate who is beyond reproach professionally, ethically, and let me tell you, I think it's time that this council put their petty politics aside and decide to do the right thing for Highland Park. I'm more than anyone would like to move on. This has been the first three weeks of an administration, and let me tell you, during the day working in town hall, it's been wonderful. These professionals are fabulous. During the day, people are coming in during those open office hours and want to know about government, they want me to help them with issues, they want to tell me about things, and I'm happy to talk to them. It's during these council meetings that the frustration mounts. It's time to move on, and tonight is the night to vote, to take a stand and to vote. Do I have a motion to confirm or reject the appointment of Daniel McCarthy for town Attorney?
I move to reject.
There is second?
I second that.
Can Rowell call, please?
Any discussion?
Rowell calling.
No reason?
Any discussion?
I suggest to speak to her vote.
I would like to speak to her vote.
We'll speak to our vote.
Councilman Chauvin.
First, I want to thank all those duty members who took the time to call, express their opinion as to how I should vote and why. Through many calls, both for and against the appointment of Mr. McCarthy, and I appreciate your candor. I also received letters as well. Two things that I have not put in my prepared speech, that I need to talk about now. First, before I continue, I want to publicly deny a statement made in the mayor's latest email. We never made the statement that we reject her appointment, even before we met him. We asked the mayor to tell us the reason she was rejecting Mr. Semenero without any work involved. She refused. We asked her for a list of the names of those attorneys that she was looking at, she refused. I refused to campaign with her because in March, when she signed petition to become the Democratic candidate, she also signed a petition for my opponent, who was a Republican term, becoming Green Party candidate, Richard Marx, who's in the back, and she was on his petition saying that she was backing him. As such, I felt I could not trust someone who was openly against the person who I was campaigning against. And as such, after she won the primary, I said I could not work with you until after the election was done. And so that's the reason for that. The first time I met Mr. McCarthy was a week before the reorganization meeting. A few hours prior to our meeting, Meryl called and said she'd like to introduce her candidate for council attorney. I asked, "What's his name?" And Meryl said, "I'd rather not say, just meet with him." I said, "Fine." So Bruce LeYai met with Meryl and him. We in essence interviewed him without prior knowledge, including his name. He at that time handed us his company's general resume, that named his partner and what his expertise was, his own general information. I think he has four associates enlisting their expertise and responsibilities. This became the basis of our interview. After we interviewed him, I said it was necessary that all members of the council needed to meet with him. Unless they met with him, I'd have no choice but to reject his nomination. We also discussed the agenda and some of Meryl's other initiatives, including holding off on appointments. I want to expand on that later in my remarks. Then we met the Monday before the reorganization to finalize the agenda. Meryl showed up with Mr. McCarthy, and they know her plan to nominate him. We tried to persuade to put it off, so it's be consistent with all the other appointments, explaining that she had three days to make nominations, which she said she knew. I stated again, other members of the council had still not met with him. And then most of all, we wanted to have a positive reorganization. She said she was still going to nominate him. I stated, "Mr. McCarthy's sitting there," then you are then forcing me into position of having to reject your nomination. The mayor said she understood that and was still going forward. We all know about the infamous reorganization meeting. The mayor announced that she was changing the agenda and appointing Mr. McCarthy as the interim attorney, which she stated did not need our confirmation. I assume this was a strategy that she had worked out with Mr. McCarthy. It was then that I felt he finally presented to the council the mayor's decision that an interim Borough Attorney without confirmation was legal. This action was determined in court not to be a legal action. The attorney is not the mayor's attorney, as she keeps emphasizing, or the council's attorney, but the attorney for both the mayor and council. He or she should be someone that we will be comfortable with. He or she should be someone who not only represents us, but all the people of Highland Park. Get some water, please. My comfort level with Mr. McCarthy...
That was mature.
Nasty.
That is very mature.
Very nasty.
Orders, please.
I apologize, this is not easy for me. Your service proposal sounds too good to be true. It reminds you the street vendor who stops and says to you, "If I get a deal for you, for $40, I can sell you this genuine Rolex." Mr. McCarthy and his firm are not a charity. He is in business, the law business. Why is the low price? Why is he so attracted or attached to Highland Park? How can he attend at least one meeting a week, provide as an associate, and still offer this low fee? He is involved with 80 municipalities, plus Perth Amboy. Where's he gonna find a time? Are we really getting Mr. McCarthy? Or are we getting an associate? How available will he really be when his office is in Cranford? We know from previous experience that we and the Borough Department has consulted with the attorney on a regular basis. Is this fee a way to get, as they say, a foot in the door? The four-year agreement mentioned is not valid, as Mr. McCarthy stated, not correctly. The attorney is a one-year appointment, withholdable flexibility until the next year appointment is made. So there can be no four-year agreement. During these past days, discussions have been held with Meryl to come up with a compromise candidate, where we can all feel confident. The mayor had rejected this compromise solution. Now, I ask myself, why is the mayor so wedded to Mr. McCarthy? She, as soon according to the statements, knows him a short time, and a short list of boys to choose from. Why not share that list with us and even add to it to come up with another candidate? We often heard equal share in the vote, that we both would be equal to and both be acceptable. It wasn't 6-0, it was gonna be 7-0. Before I cast my vote, there's one more thing I'd like to say. As I stated earlier, I want to go back to that Tuesday meeting when Summers met with Meryl and Dan. I think it's essential that I, we, work with the mayor, but this is a two-way street. I don't appreciate going to Tuesday's meeting when no reporters were there or in attendance, and then reading about it, every detail, everything we discussed the next morning on the home news. The reporter confirmed that she had talked to the mayor earlier today, before our meeting. The reporter had met with other councilmen and me during the day Tuesday, and never mentioned anything that the mayor had discussed with her. She did ask me questions, seeking to continue to inflame the situation. You gotta sell newspapers. Quite frankly, I think I was rude to her. I refused to fall into her trap or her questioning to inflame the situation. Quite frankly, I refused her negative questions. And there've been other times since that appears that the reporter knew more than I did about the mayor's positions or ideas. The press has a right to access of information, but I believe if the mayor wants to be force right with this council and ensure us force right with her, we should have those thoughts and ideas before the press. Mayor, how can we come to agreements? How can we develop a positive relationship when you meet with the press before meeting with us? What attitude can there be when you have already been quoted and gone to the press, leaving no room for discussion, no room for consensus, no room for compromise? If your tactic is to make this councilman support your trade changes by using the media as a way to sway or pressure my voting on issues, it will not work. I'm not against change. I'm against the way it's done without input or regard to the council's thoughts. It has been the council that has not spoken up or shown any interview with the media to create the sober atmosphere that we now have. If you wish to betray your election, count as a mandate, by the way, I receive more than those number of votes in previous elections. I will not blindly follow, nor will I seek the easiest, less taxing solution to a problem. I'm a stubborn man. I wish to do the right thing to this community. I will not allow myself to be pressured to do anything for anyone that I find unconscionable. I too would like, as stated in the email, sharing your vision for a new kind of government. I would also like to know what that government is, because you have that stated. I would like to work with you willingly, not pressured by you to work towards those ends. Meryl, we will move forward. We will get past this temporary bend in the road, because I believe we both have Highland Park's best interests in our hearts. However, this time, I now vote to reject Mr. McCarthy as Borough Attorney.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Zizinski.
One of the things I'd like to do is, I'd like to talk a little bit first about the Borough Attorney in terms of the responsibility and reporting relationship of the Borough Attorney. It seems like there's some misperceptions with respect to the responsibility and reporting relationship. The Borough Attorney in Highland Park serves the borough of Highland Park, not just the mayor, not just the council. The Borough Attorney serves all of us here. For some reason or another, in the press, there seems to be this idea that the Borough Attorney only serves the mayor, and only the mayor should be the one that's going to honor an appointment or push forward an appointment. The working relationship between the Borough Attorney and the borough of Highland Park, as professionals in Highland Park, is more with professionals in the building than it is with the council, it is with the mayor. From my experience over the last six years, one of the things I see is that the Borough Attorney spends more time with the Borough Clerk, the Finance Director, and the Borough Administrator than he or she would do with the council or the mayor. Next comes the standing committees of council. We have each council member chairs one of the six committees, and the Borough Attorney interfaces with us on a regular basis because we are the ones, for the most part, who are involved in ordinances or changes that require a legal counsel, and that's where most of the time is spent. Now, the mayor, at least again, from my experience, spends the least amount of time of all these people I just mentioned. So it's pretty important that we understand what the relationship is between the Borough Attorney and the governing body, or the government, if you will, of Highland Park. I have, like Ted, I have concerns about appointing Mr. McCarthy. And for the most part, these could be categorized into three areas. Ted talked a little bit about the appointment or interview process. I also had a lot of difficulty with that. Now, unlike Ted, I didn't have two hours before. I showed up at a meeting for another purpose, and Mr. McCarthy was there. And it's kind of interesting, well, let's start with the very first meeting we had. We had a meeting on December 20th, and on December 20th, we went through the reorganization agenda, and we went through each appointment, one by one. And at that time, it was Meryl LeT, Meryl Frank, was asked if she had any recommendations, and she said no. I will add, however, that Mayor Frank did say that she did not want to reappoint Mr. Semenero. However, the second meeting, Mr. McCarthy showed up. I didn't even have a chance to read his resume. And let me tell you, folks, over my career, I have conducted and I have orchestrated and I have chaired numerous interviews for professional candidates. And never once was I brought a candidate for an interview without having first had an opportunity to at least know his name or her name, without at least having a resume in my hand to read for a few minutes. This, in my estimation, was unconscionable. There was a total lack of respect. And I come to find out later that the press knew about it. I had no idea that the man was gonna be there, but the newspapers knew about it. So this is interesting again. We're talking about open government, you know, communication, all that sort of stuff. Now, what the mayor did on reorganization evening is illegally appointing Mr. McCarthy. Now, this was determined by the Superior Court of Middlesex County. It was an illegal appointment, okay? And this was a position that reports to the entire governing body, and yet, only half of the governing body even met the man before that day. Three of the council members didn't have an opportunity to interview Mr. McCarthy when he was being appointed by our mayor. She wasn't willing to take any time to let other council members have an opportunity to meet Mr. McCarthy. Those of us who did interview Mr. McCarthy were never asked our opinion by Mayor Frank. I have never again conducted an interview where someone who was, if you will, coordinating the interview didn't ask my opinion of the candidate. Again, it's unconscionable. At the reorganization meeting, our mayor announced that she put together a deal with Mr. McCarthy. Again, this has always been a democratic process whereby the entire governing body meets to reach a consensus on the terms of any contract. I'm sure our residents of Highland Park wouldn't like either one council member or one mayor making the deal, if you will, on any contract for the borough. That's why we have seven elected officials here, so that we could reach consensus and move forward, so that one person doesn't take complete control over the government. Well, again, these terms of the contract were not revealed to us until reorganization, the reorganization meeting. Now, the deal that the mayor cooked up is not good for Highland Park, and I'll explain a little bit about that later. At last week's meeting, the mayor announced that she interviewed other candidates. Who were these candidates? When were the interviews? Where was the interview? I don't know anything about this. Again, I was never informed of these interviews, and I suspect that other council members were also not informed. Is this the way that we should be doing business in Highland Park? If the mayor were a council member, and this happened to her, would she be happy about it, that she was not involved? This is not a game. This is very, very serious business. And I hope that the mayor's interview process is not part of her vision, because if it is, the vision needs corrective lenses, and such behavior is not a good fit for Highland Park. Now, I'd like to talk about the deal a little bit. And usually when I get into these kind of things, I use overheads, but we don't have an opportunity for that here. But just to give you a summary, Mr. McCarthy is currently the municipal attorney for the city of Perth Amboy. Now, he told us in his interview that he supplies, or he furnishes, whatever, three associate members of his firm full-time to the city of Perth Amboy. Now, I checked this out. I talked to Mr. Don Purley of Perth Amboy, and he confirmed that Mr. McCarthy provides a subordinate for three days a week to Perth Amboy. Now, I also asked Mr. McCarthy in the interview what his compensation was for the city of Perth Amboy. Then he smiled a little, right? And he said to me, "I'm embarrassed to say that my firm only gets $30,000 a year." Wow, $30,000 a year. Now, one of the things I'm involved with in my everyday work is numbers a lot. So some quick math says, well, if you have an attorney three days a week, and that's eight hours a day, that comes out to, you can check it, 1,248 hours in a year. All right? Now, follow me on this. Typically billed, and I'll explain this, I did some other checking. I checked to find out what attorney fees typically are in other municipalities, and the range is from $125 an hour to $200 an hour. Is anybody surprised about that? Well, I could look at this another way. If you take the $30,000 a year, now this doesn't even count council meetings like tonight, and you divide that by 1,248, guess what it comes out to? $24.04 an hour. Now, I'll tell you what, I would really love to have an attorney for $24.07 an hour. I've never seen that before. Now, you know, there's no adage, if it's too good to be true, it usually is. I've heard that many times in my life, and every time, it rang true. Now, this smells, or this sounds, I should say, like a great deal for Perth Amboy. But let me tell you, it also smells. Let's take the next step. Mr. McCarthy is charging Perth Amboy only $30,000 for three days a week. Perth Amboy is actually spending $10,000 per year, now keep this aligned, $10,000, for each day of service. Now, if you remember, at the reorganization meeting, Mayor Frank said that Mr. McCarthy's firm would supply an underling to Highland Park for one day a week. So if I take Perth Amboy's and I divide the $30,000 by three, that's real easy, that comes out to $10,000 for one day. So how come in Highland Park, we're gonna pay $45,000 for one day, when Perth Amboy only pays $10,000? I don't understand this. Now, according to Mayor Frank, who did this negotiation with Mr. McCarthy all by herself, now I for one again was not asked to participate in this open government negotiation or decision. Mr. McCarthy wants to charge us $45,000 plus the $20,000 we got for this one day. Now, that comes out to 65, which is just about what Mr. Semenero gets right now, which is 67 or 68, something like that. So Mr. McCarthy charges Perth Amboy $10, I mean $10,000 for one day per week per year. He wants to charge us $45,000 for the same thing. Is anyone troubled by the fact that he's cutting a deal with our mayor for four and a half times the amount he is charging in other municipality? Now, let's assume for a minute that he has a good accountant, the accountant's not making a mistake in his offer, and it's not a calculation error. Then he is either benevolent, or there is some other motive for the low-ball price. So if he's benevolent, then why isn't he benevolent to Highland Park? Unless, of course, something else is going on. Of course, it wouldn't be political, because after all, Mayor Frank said that Mr. McCarthy is not political. Doesn't anyone smell something foul here? So a deal was struck that council members were not allowed to participate in, and it was for four and a half times that of a neighboring municipality. Some deal, or maybe some shenanigans. I'm suspicious. And now I know why I was not allowed to participate in the deal. I know that the deal is too shady, and shady deals are not a good fit for Highland Park. Let's look at some other aspects of the deal that Mayor Frank cooked up by herself with Mr. McCarthy. First off, we get a subordinate, one day a week for the everyday work. So in Highland Park, we need to make sure that all of the legal work gets done in one day. So we get an underling to hang out at Borough Hall all day, waiting for questions and legal issues to pop up. What happens if we have an issue come up on one of the other four days a week? I'm sure the underling is sitting around... I'm sure the underling is sitting around somewhere, waiting for us to call with issues, so that he can answer them back in Cranford, or wherever he's at, all right? The next thing you know, the mayor will want to provide this attorney, who's going to be here one day a week, with an office, so that people don't see him sitting around doing anything, nothing. Right now...
Can we let him talk, please?
Right now, regardless of the legal issue, we get a principal of the firm, not an underling. We get a principal. And, and we get, with Highland Park's deal, an underling with even less experience than Mr. McCarthy. And we are still paying more than Perth Amboy. I asked Mayor Frank if she knew anything about the underling that Mr. McCarthy would send us. No, she didn't know anything about this person. She said it's a C V. After all, none of us interviewed that person. We didn't get a chance to interview the person who will actually be working here. That doesn't make sense to me. Do we know anything about the quality of his or her work? Absolutely nothing. And underling is not a good fit for Highland Park. Now, the mayor boasts that Mr. McCarthy's firm serves 80 municipalities in New Jersey. We should be overjoyed with this idea that we could become number 81. It kind of feels like the McDonald's franchise when over 81 serve. I don't want Highland Park to be number 81. I want Highland Park to be number one, for respect, the commitment, experience, and competence of the attorney serving our town. Again, Mr. McCarthy's firm is not a good fit. Now, let's talk a little bit about competence. Mr. McCarthy has less than half the legal experience of Mr. Seminero, which doesn't necessarily make him a bad attorney. However, at a recent reorganization meeting, Mr. McCarthy's lack of experience and expertise showed when he offered a legal opinion, again, a legal opinion, that was overturned by the Middlesex County Superior Court. His first legal counsel was in serious error. Attorney errors are not a good fit for Highland Park. So where are we at now? Well, I'm most disappointed and somewhat depressed over the events over the last few weeks going into December. And what bothers me most about this controversy over the borough attorney appointment, as escalated, is that this attorney appointment has escalated to threats and bullying. Early in December, I was personally told, Merle, by a person claiming to be in your inner circle of political supporters, that if I did not vote for her candidate, incidentally, who wasn't announced until December 28th, I didn't even know who the candidate was at this time, that I and any other council member who opposes Mayor Frank's appointment will be subjected to a voter recall petition. Throughout my six years serving on this council, I have never, never been threatened and extremely distressed over this political tactic. Should my holding this office depend on which way I vote on a personnel issue? Well, as long as I still breathe, I'll never let my integrity be compromised by this or any other kind of political pressure. It's ridiculous. If this means I lose my position on this council because I vote my conscience, then, then let that be it. Because for me, it is far, far more important that I be able to face my family, my friends, and my neighbors, knowing that I was not intimidated by politicians. For all the above reasons, I cannot, in good conscience, vote for Mr. McCarthy. Therefore, I vote to reject.
I'm not going to talk that much because I'm going to lose my voice. But before you, I see a lot of you looking up here at me, wondering what kind of a wise guy shirt I have on. Picture of my two of my 14 grandchildren. I celebrated my birthday last night. I too, in somewhat distressed, have been remarked. I got a call from Merle back in June to meet, and I met with her and Ted Chalklin over a glass of wine. She had said that many of the people in her camp were not familiar with us or knew enough about us. So, she was going to sign up for coffee, so we can sit and talk and find out who we were. That never materialized. She called me in July, no, the end of June, and I wasn't at home. I returned her call, and I'm still waiting for her to call me back on that particular issue, whatever it was. But I had met with her, we did talk, and I expressed my dissatisfaction with the way the reorganization meeting went down. It seemed like there was a conspiracy to circumvent the process. And that process is, according to the rules of order, which were violated. And on top of it, when somebody wanted to speak up, we were out of order, we were denied our constitutional rights, according to the First Amendment, which he swore to uphold an hour earlier. So, knowing that, I just can't set the word, her nomination, appointment of Daniel McCarthy
I'd like to take the time to explain my position as well. First and foremost, the last, last mention I've had of anything on the record was a message I had left behind, in all sincerity for Merle, welcoming her and expressing my desire to vote for her. That was not the first time I had expressed that message to Merle. I had met with her on several occasions, I had dinner with her, I had breakfast with her and her friends after the election. I had spoken with her on several occasions. I had great hopes for us working together in the future. I have to tell you, however, that last night was the first time I have ever sat down and talked to Merle about this particular topic. And when I asked her, while on the several occasions that we had spoken, she had never broached the subject of the municipal attorney, she told me that she felt it was prudent to go to the leadership, and that it was, that for what it was worth, that's what she felt was the right way to go. I have several years of experience working with municipal attorneys. I had let Merle know in August the fact that I was not going to be at the swearing-in ceremony. And I did not want my absence to be misconstrued. I had had a longstanding vacation planned with my family at that juncture, that I had, I, I basically did not want to be, to have my absence misconstrued from the public, and also have it construed that I was not in support of Merle. Because I am in support of our new mayor. I'm willing to work with her on many, many respects. I too am surprised to find out that I supposedly had spoken with Merle on several other occasions about the attorney. I spoke to the press recently, when they were asking me about what was going to go on this evening. And what I conveyed to the press is the same thing I'm going to convey to everyone this evening. I felt that I should go into the process with an open mind. I had found out about Merle's candidate on December, it was either the 28th or the 29th, and I actually found out about it from a reporter. I did not find out about it from Merle. I did not find out about it from one of my fellow council members. I had been told that I would hear about her candidate several days prior, and I had let everyone know on a number of occasions, that I needed to find out well before, well, I really asked for it before Christmas, simply because of the holiday and my schedule being planned. I knew I would not be available. Our council has always been very inclusive when it came to making decisions. There has, to my knowledge, the time that I have been on this council, we work with the public, we work within our committee structure, and we work all together to come to a general consensus. And again, I reiterate the fact that my message that I left behind, I was very sincere, and I still am in going forward and working with Merle. To that end, I had also had left her a list of elements for the Economic Development Committee to work on. I had, I, I pretty much think, coming back from my vacation, I came back to the process being as objective as possible. What I saw on the tape of the swearing-in ceremony, first and foremost, I was very proud of the council and the mayor with what they had extended, the new mayor, as well as the old mayor. And it appeared that everyone was willing to work together. And I knew that this was an outstanding issue. I had spoken to my committee council members about this. And I had even said, if it can be wait, if it can, this decision can wait until I can come back and work on it, I would ask that you do that. I asked that I had the opportunity to interview the candidate. Normally, I go into a professional search with a wide range. I ask for a town bank of applications. I narrow down who I would like to interview. We do it in a committee structure. And the person chosen is chosen with a majority vote. And that is what I understood to be open government, and that is what I understood to be the democratic process. I met with Mr. McCarthy, and I asked him a number of questions. And my questions were based on, not was, not what was solely good for the council, and not what was solely good for the mayor, but what was the best thing to do with the professional for the entirety of the borough. To that end, I had taken into consideration our, our day-to-day professionals, I took into consideration accessibility, and I also took into consideration the concern that I had after watching Channel 34 and our cable access channel of the swearing-in ceremony. I was very dismayed at that. I do not like to see anyone in the public silence, and I do especially not like to see my fellow council members when they want to have a discussion. I would not expect to have mayor silence, nor would I expect to see any of my council members' silence. I had asked Merle last night, when I met with her, because I felt in good conscience I needed to discuss my perspective with her before I discussed it with anybody else, and that includes the press. And I am not comfortable with an attorney that neither side is comfortable with. And what I, the reason why I am voting to reject this candidate is because I had wanted to have a compromised entity. Merle told me that was not possible. We need to do what is best for the borough. And to do what's best for the borough, we need to resolve this issue, and move on, and continue with the hard work that we have, we have proven and we are capable of doing. That's the reason why I think that rejecting this candidate is the best thing for the borough.
I would like to take this opportunity to nominate Dominic Semenaro to be our borough attorney. Do you have a second?
Can you? Move. Confirm. Move to confirm second.
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Excuse me. I'd like to make a statement before you make your motion.
Should we, we have a roll call, please, in order to make a statement?
Excuse me.
We have a roll call in...
No, it doesn't have to change the vote, but before I recognize you and the motion, I'd like to make a statement, and I'd like to give Mr. McCarthy an opportunity to answer some of these questions. Mr. McCarthy?
There's a motion on the floor.
Order! 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 That's not on the agenda.
Neither is the, the motion. Um, excuse me.
The motion is on the agenda.
Excuse me. He hasn't been recognized. I'd like to give Mr. McCarthy an opportunity to answer your question.
I'd like to first go to the motion and the vote.
And a roll call vote, and you can do whatever you want.
The vote is over on Mr. McCarthy, Mayor. That's a moot point. He should be able to defend his record. He served the county, but head for the vote.
That's exactly what he's a kid.
Motion, please. Second. Roll call Valerie.
It's Chalklin.
Esther Merle won the primary. Frank and I have been with her as long as I've been.
Vote! Just vote! Just vote!
Order!
I have listened to the mayor, I have listened to the radio, I have listened to the TV. The only time I've been...
Vote! 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 Vote!
Out of order. Out of order. I have the floor, I have no one, there is no discussion at this meeting. There is no open discussion.
You called a vote, so vote!
Order!
Keep quiet.
Order!
Esther Merle won the primary.
Please, can we have some order?
Show your intelligence.
We have some order on the council as well.
She informed us that she couldn't work with Mr. Seminero. When asked why, she was vague about her reasons. She stated she felt that someone from out of town would be more appropriate and would have less conflict. I don't agree with the mayor's conclusion that someone outside of Highland Park should be appointed. Over the years, the ones I remember, we've had excellent borough attorneys such as Larry Lerner, Bill Hamilton, and Bruce Kaplan.
She doesn't get to speak.
For all who lived in Highland Park when they were appointed as borough attorney. Bill is the only one who no longer lives in Highland Park. As the mayor will not compromise with another candidate, I am left with little alternatives but to seek the appointment of Mr. Seminero. He has served this borough well. He has my full confidence. He has negotiated well with litigants and tax appeal cases to the benefit of the town. In the direction of the borough council, he is litigating on behalf of the town over the charter school issue, even though most people don't know it. And the Board of Education attorney has not submitted bills for her service, neither has Mr. Seminero submitted any bills for his service. Mayor Frank was at the meeting of the Council of Local Mandates when Mr. Seminero presented his arguments on behalf of the town. She should have been impressed, as would the judge for his excellent presentation, since Mr. Seminero was voted in the favorable decision. I've asked why he hasn't billed for litigation over these past years, and he informed me that it is a practice to bill when a case is closed, rather than submitting partial bills. He stated that only one case has been carried forth during that time span is about to close, the other cases are still being carried forward. One instance where his service has been exceptional dealt with the Ken Buck landfill case. He went one more time looking at approximately $50,000 cost to the borough. However, working with other litigants, he was able to reduce our cost to $27,000, a far cry from the initial exit that we received. The insurance companies were so pleased with his performance and the savings they agreed to pick up his fees, saving us additional monies. He has given us excellent legal advice, which has benefited the town, and no one pointed out anything to the contrary. Most of all, he's never tried to influence my vote. I have, and voted my conscience, and I vote yes to confirm.
We're waiting for the clerk.
I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk about...
Can we have some order, please? Order?
I, I will, however, talk about something that has bothered me. It's a perception. There's a perception that there's a conflict between Mr. Seminero's responsibility as Democratic Party Chair and his serving as borough attorney. And if the perception exists, there's no question about it. I know, from an analytical perspective, that that conflict of interest has never taken place. Nevertheless, we all know that perceptions become reality. And I'm concerned about this, I'm very concerned about this. And I've had a couple of discussions with Mr. Seminero. And Mr. Seminero has agreed that he would, he would discuss further his continuing as party chair in Highland Park, if indeed he were appointed borough attorney. Now, I'm not going to go over his qualifications. I could talk about the years of service and the wonderful things that he's done for Highland Park. Our mayor talked about possibly saving over four years $100,000. Well, in two years, Mr. Seminero saved this borough close to $350,000 with the landfill project. And he did this, if there was a limitation to his contract, if there was a limitation on his contract, he might have said, "Okay, Judge, you recommended that Highland Park pay $350,000, then let's do it, because I'm not going to make any more money if I continue to litigate this thing." But he, he came with a recommendation to council to continue the litigation, because he felt he could win, and he did. He won big time, all right? And I appreciate that. That's a hell of a lot more than $100,000, and we owe him something for that. Nevertheless, I still have this problem with this perception of conflict of interest, and I'm hoping Mr. Seminero will find a way to resolve that. But because of the service that he's provided Highland Park over the last five years, and let me tell you, I come from the private sector, the corporate community, and we don't fire somebody for doing a good job. We usually give them a raise and a promotion. We don't fire them. And he hasn't had a raise in his fees, his... And he hasn't had a raise in his fees, his hourly fees, since Mr. Kaplan left as our borough attorney five years ago. Okay, so in case you folks don't know that, that's some more information. And I vote to confirm Mr. Severnarrow.
Mr. Raska, Mr. Rep.
I'm gonna have trouble talking, so I'm just gonna move to confirm. He's a reputable, honorable individual, I've known him and his entire family all their lives. Thank you.
Ms. Wolf?
I too am going to make my comments briefly. There has been repeatedly presented a perception problem, which, the, the level of perception that has not been addressed has been a level of professionalism, a level of the fact that this borough has operated very well and has always answered questions, whether it be in a public or private forum, and we have come to rely upon an attorney who has served us well. I would again, and I would echo Mr. Kaczynski's sentiment, in encouraging the Democratic Committee to come up with a solution to address the public's perception problem. I have, as Merle had said to me when she asked me to consider Dan McCarthy and work with him, I would also encourage Merle to work with Dominic and make her assessments after she's worked with him. Therefore, I too am voting to confirm the appointment.
Motion carried. I would like to make a statement now, excuse me, I'd like to make a statement now. Obviously, I'm very disappointed in the actions of this council. Knowing that the council knows what I know, I'm very disappointed, I am in fact appalled. But I will work with Mr. Severnarrow, as I said earlier, this council has the vote. This council holds the cards, this is the weak mayor form of government. But I would like to say something else. I'd like to refer back to some of the statements made by my councilmen. And I want to explain something to you. I said it earlier, I spoke to these council members and offered to come up with a compromised candidate. They said no, then they wouldn't meet with me. I want to make something very clear. It was not that they didn't have the time to interview this candidate, that I didn't offer them the time to interview this candidate. Is it, Mr. Kaczynski? I asked you to meet with me Monday, I said Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Not on the candidate. Not on the candidate. Say, say the truth, Merle.
I asked you to meet with me, Mr. Kaczynski, I didn't go into details. I said, would you meet with me Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? In fact, Mr. Kaczynski, you called me back to tell me that you were rude, your wife said that you should call me back. I wanted to meet with you to discuss the reorganization, and what did you think that that included? Excuse me, I did not interrupt your statements, did I? I want to make something very clear. I had every intention of working with this council. I said to several of them, tell me what to do and I'll do it. I explained to them that I could not work with this borough attorney, and they didn't care. They didn't seem to care then that we all have a consensus about our borough attorney. I want to make something else very clear. When the mayor makes an appointment, the council then has thirty days to reject or confirm. I would expect that the council take that time, and if they felt that they didn't know the candidate well enough, and they needed to find out more, that they would have an open mind and take those thirty days to interview them fully, to understand what the deal is. And let me explain one thing further. There is no deal that a mayor can make. The council has, holds all the cards. The council must confirm, I don't get a vote. There is no dictator here, I get no vote. Excuse me, can we have order? Thank you. What I'd like to say finally is, I will work with the attorney that you have confirmed tonight. But I also wanted on the record that I am disappointed, that I don't feel that this is in the spirit of cooperation, that you did have other options that you chose not to face, and that this is not going to help this community move forward, and I am terribly, terribly disappointed about that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure. Second.